Good evening and welcome to the June 12, 2018, meeting of the Gilderland Board of Education. Would you all please silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is public comment number one. We have several people signed up this evening and we will start with Karen Culvert-Jones.
Tonight, I'm here as a volunteer with the High School Exchange Program called Youth for Understanding. This year, there are two YFU students at the high school, Sarin, who's from Japan, and Malin, who's from Germany. They're finishing up their junior year. It is the United States Department of State which issues the J-1 visas that allow an international student the opportunity to come to the United States for 10 months and to attend a public school while living with a host family. This secondary school program dates back to 1961, created by Senator William Fulbright. The purpose was to increase understanding between people from different countries through the common goal of promoting education and cultural understanding. Malin and Sarin have had an incredible year at GHS and have embraced the American high school experience. They've taken a variety of classes, some of which are not offered in their country: US history, cinema as literature, choreography, ceramics, drawing and painting, and advanced studio. They have used Fifth Block to meet with teachers for assistance with their studies. Between them, they were members of the dance squad, cross-country running, cross-country ski team, Gilderland players, performing at the cultural fair, mixed choir, and track and field. They both attended prom and ball. Their English language ability has blossomed over the months. I love it when they sometimes even sound like an American teenager. This evening, I'm here to thank you, the Board of Education members and the school administrators, for welcoming this year's international students to the high school. Your support of the exchange students is greatly appreciated. The positive effect an exchange student can have on a school, the students they meet and befriend, the community and their host family, is profound, long-lasting, and life-changing. Both Sarin and Malin will be missed when they return to Germany and Japan in less than a month. I have so enjoyed getting to know Sarin and learning how to make sushi from an expert. Her performance in "The Music Man" and at the cultural fair was amazing. I love her excitement and her positive attitude. There will be a huge void in our home on July 11, when I return from the Albany Airport. That is the date for Malin's flight back to Germany. It's hard to put into words all of the great experiences we've had this year. I will miss her smile, silly faces and laughter. I will miss how she reacts to what she likes and what she doesn't like. I'll miss taking her to the Altamont Fair, Chipotle, buying ice cream at Stewart's during their annual ice cream sale, eating Chinese food, ordering pizza, teaching her how to play Hearts, and traveling to cities in the Northeast. We cheered as she ran in the Freihoffers Run for Women with a GHS friend. She finished 387th out of 3,500. Malin was able to visit her host sister in Philly and stay in a college dorm. She got to know her host brother and sister-in-law, who live in New Jersey. Malin is our third YFU exchange daughter. She will be greatly missed. I want to take this time to thank Sarin and Malin's teachers, their guidance counselors, Tom Dvorak and Amy Knapp, their coaches, and their wonderful friends, who help them feel at home in another country and culture. A special thank you to Sarin's host family, Nellie and Greg Gutos, and her host grandfather, Cornelius. Many thanks to their YFU area representatives, Janet Breeze and Samantha Torengren. And I also want to thank my family for their acceptance and kindness as we hosted again. I'm always happy to talk with families and individuals who want more information on hosting an international student or the Study Abroad Program for our American students. YFU participates in CBYX, YES, and FLEX. These are all full scholarships to study in the United States. And CBYX is also available for American students who want to do an academic year in Germany. YFU also has an additional 200 scholarships for their Study Abroad Program. I'm going to turn it over to Sarin and Malin.
First of all, I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to speak today. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Sarin Takesaki, and I am an exchange student from Japan. I came here last August about 10,000 kilometers from my country. I am very grateful and lucky to have had this opportunity to study abroad for a whole year at Gilderland High School. Everything was a very variable and memorable experience. On June 26, I will go back to Japan on a 14-hour flight. When I was at Gilderland High School, I enjoyed every day. One particular activity I enjoyed was dance. When I came here, I wanted to dance so much. I have been born dancing since when I was six years old. I loved to dance. So I participated in the dance squad at GHS. Of course, when I... It was really a start from zero. I was very nervous. However, a lot of people talked to me and helped. I really enjoyed deepening the relationships through dance, music, and enjoyed the basketball game and volunteer activities with Dance Squad. In addition, I experienced many things that Japanese high schools do not provide, such as dance classes, the cultural fair, the school musical, and especially the senior ball. These opportunities gave me a really good chance to make friends. A year had passed, and school is already over. I still can't believe it. But I'm standing here, waiting to return to a whole other world that I've lived in for my whole life. I will soon cry the tears and give hug to the people who have me the most to me literally, the people who at one point didn't know anything about me, and yet they agreed to open their home and heart to me. The people who showed me their cultures and religions I have never seen before. The people who helped me find myself. The people I was randomly put in classes with and who later became my new best friend. I will soon start to realize how much things have changed, how much I have changed. I am so blessed to have something that makes saying goodbye so hard. But this is not goodbye. This is an "I'll see you later." Of course, this year, bettering my English skills was really important for me. However, when I go back to Japan, I feel my experience of how I enjoy American high school life and memories with my Gilderland High School friends are more important than my English skills. My friends and teachers were all very kind to me. I also really appreciate Karen Jones and Jenna Breeze from YFU, who coordinated everything, and the Gutos family that treated me like a real daughter for a year. I will never forget my new lifelong friends who have supported me throughout my experience. Thank you for everything.
I want to thank all of my teachers, my guidance counselor, Mr. Dvorak, and coaches, especially Mrs. Rudolph, Mrs. Teeter, Ms. Gockley, Ms. Attila Gano, Ms. McConaughey, and Coach Kozier. I am glad I learned so much about US history. I even feel like I know more about American history than about German history. Mrs. Rudolph is an incredible teacher, and sometimes I wonder how she even has a life besides teaching. She puts so much work, effort, and creativity in her teaching, trying to teach history in a fun and entertaining way. Another teacher I wanted to thank is Ms. Gockley. She taught me so much about drawing, proportion, space, and painting. I hope I can continue studying art in college. I am also really, really glad I joined cross-country in the beginning. It helped me a lot to find people I knew before school started. The team was really nice. It is a long season, but it is a lot of fun, even though I never really ran before. It is fun to compete, not just against others, but also against yourself. I am happy about it because it is a sport I will be able to continue and get better at when I'm back in Germany. So we had this assignment in my English class that you have to write an "I Believe" paper. So I wrote mine about that you can build a home anywhere. So I'll just read that now. "I believe that you can build a home anywhere. I used to think that home is defined by having my family and my friends around me. This year, I learned that I don't have to be with my real family or my friends. I know I can build a home wherever I want to. One year ago in August, it was around 3:00 AM in the morning, I zipped up my suitcase and I drove with my parents, my best friend, and my dog to the airport. It was quiet in the car. Everyone was just depressed, sad, and empty. I didn't really realize for a long time that I was about to leave. Everyone and everything: my parents, who always support me, my best friend, who I laugh until we cry, my brother, who visits once in a while, my room with my red closet, the view of our street from my window, the picture of Audrey Hepburn above my bed, the curly brown fur of my dog, our basement that kept getting flooded, sparkling water, red, my city, public transportation, graffiti all over buildings, and German candy. So I left. I left everything I had for 15 years behind and started again, but this time on my own. The first two weeks were hard. I got up in the morning and my heart hurt. I missed everything: my family and friends, light switches, outlets, doorknobs, food, and our shower. But every month, it got better. I joined sports I never did before. I went to a high school where I did not know many people or teachers. I found incredible friends, people I trust, people I care about. I am part of my host family. We have silly traditions and sad jokes. I know my way around the high school. I know where everything is in our house. I know what my mom expects me to do in the house. I know when to change my sheets, when to clean and wash the table. I know what they like and what they don't like. It is not like I'm a visitor. I am part of them. They are my family. People usually think I should be happy and excited to go back, but I'm not. I built a new life that I am used to now. And in one month, it is going to change again and again. I have to adjust, and that is going to be hard. I am going to miss so many things. I'm going to miss people, schools, sports, the Red Sea, vending machines, the microwave in the cafeteria, my classes after school, the gym, banquets, Towah Santa, the library, study hall lockers, GHS announcements, Google Classroom, typing in a code to get into the house, Cheetos, Walmart, Trader Joe's, Sephora, sports shirts, football, my room, the kitchen, our neighbors, the driveway, and my street. Once again, I will get up in the morning and my heart might hurt because I will miss everything: my family and friends, light switches, outlets, doorknobs, Stewart's, and our shower. One year ago, everything I've known for 15 years was taken away from me. I came here and built another life with new people and new traditions. In one year, I've learned so much about this culture, about traditions, about my own country, and about myself. I am proud to say that it was the best thing I ever did, and I would do it again and again. I have a second home now. Even though I won't be able to spend my senior year here, I will always be here in my mind. I will keep the memories I made in my heart and share them with the people I love, so I can come back whenever I want to, and I will have family and friends because it is my second home. So I believe. I believe that you can build a home anywhere.
I'm Nellie Gutos, and Sarin is our sixth foreign exchange student that we've hosted. And she's been awesome. And people wonder, think, I think many people think that you have to have children in the high school to host, but that's not true. We've hosted three while we've had children in school and three while we've had no children at home. There's a lot of advantages to that because when you're not technically savvy, you've always got a teenager to know exactly what to do when you get stuck. And you learn different things. Like, I didn't know that in Japan, they have a potato truck that comes around instead of an ice cream truck. And for Christmas, of course, Japan is a Buddhist country, they go to Kentucky Fried Chicken. KFC is the big thing. We've never been there, but she told us that. So I wouldn't know things like that. The reason I wanted to speak is because I think there's not enough host families for students. I know Rotary contacted me and asked if I might be able to find a family for a boy from Spain. And through YFU, there's an interest for having a girl from the Netherlands. And I think there's a misconception that you have to have children in school to be a host family. We probably are a very unlikely family. We had my dad, who was going through a transition, who was 84 at the time. We had Sarin, who was 17, and my husband and I. But we made a wonderful family. And what I think so important about it is if you look at the beginning of exchange programs, AFS was one of the ones we hosted through, which stood for American Field Service. It was started after World War II, when the soldiers were in the field, and they said, "What can we do to prevent future world wars?" And they came up with the idea of exchange programs. And that's how that particular program started. But many of them started around that time period, after World War II in those years. And I think in this age where we have a lot of hatred, misunderstanding, and...
Nellie, I'm sorry. I don't want to interrupt you, but if you could just come a little closer to the microphone.
You know, violence and, you know, we need more global understanding. And exchange programs are ways you can do it right from your home and learn about another culture. So my whole gist for doing this or coming up here is to say, think about hosting, or do you know somebody that might be a good host? It's a wonderful opportunity. You get to visit other countries later and experience cultures you wouldn't see, you know, on your own. But you get to see them personally. So I'm going to go to Japan one of these days. And it's a wonderful thing to have these experiences on your belt. Like I said, we've done six, three without children. So think about it. You don't have to be the average family with two parents and two children to make a wonderful experience for a student, a child, to prevent. And by doing so, you really promote global understanding, and that's so important today. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, if there's questions for...
Can I ask you to ask questions if you want to? I'll have the girls come back up.
Sure. Questions? Barb?
They want me to ask my traditional question. When did you start studying English in your school system?
I think I studied, I started English in fourth grade, I believe. I'm not quite sure, but yeah, I think so.
Now, do your parents speak English?
Yeah, kind of.
No, because really, you could be taken for an American from my years. How about your experience?
I started to study English since when I was seven years old.
Very good. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
How does your school day differ at home versus what you experienced here at the high school? Like, when do you start? And what kinds of activities do you have that maybe we don't have here?
So my day starts at 7:50 instead of like 7:30. We also don't have ABCD days, so we have it in weeks. So every day in the week is different, except, well, the week basically repeats every single time. So Monday is different, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and then it repeats all over. And each day has a different time, so I might have like, one day I have eight classes, the next day I have like four. So it's really, it depends. It's really different, yeah. And the classes are shorter. We usually have 45 minutes, but I think in 11th grade, it changes to 90-minute classes. So that's kind of the same then.
Exactly the same with Germany high school.
Same as here?
No, same with Germany.
Oh, same as in Germany? Okay.
And both girls will be returning to their high school, so they're not graduating. Sarin, how many years have you been there?
One year. So yeah, when I go back to Japan, I will be a senior. Yeah, one more year.
Do either of you have a potential career path that you may be trying to follow up on?
So I want to study art. I hope I can come back for college, but, well, it's expensive, so we'll see. And otherwise, I was thinking about teaching, but that might change, so we'll see, yeah.
The future, what do I want to be? Okay, I want to be flight attendant, so I will keep going to learning English.
Ah, very good. And you have free flights here? Excellent, excellent.
Other questions? Thank you so much for coming in. We always love to see you. It's so impressive. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so next, we have Cole Cornfield.
Hi. Is the mic, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yeah. I'd like to thank you all for giving me a chance to speak. My name is Cole Cornfield, and I'm part of the high school student government. And I was part of the committee that created a survey, whose results I'll be speaking about tonight. A few weeks ago, the members of the student faculty, student government, met with a member from the school faculty to discuss the change to one-to-one Chromebooks next year. And in that meeting, the student government was told that next year, the BYOD network, which is the one the students and faculty connect their phones to, would be taken away. Though, we decided to do a survey to get the student body's opinion on that and a few other things. And we ended up making that survey, though the results aren't really that shocking. Of the total respondents, 71% said they would feel affected by BYD taken away. Respondents were then asked how they might be affected, and the responses were almost universally negative. Students said it would be much harder to communicate with their parents outside of school, especially about sports practices and other extracurricular activities. They mentioned this, due to the location and the infrastructure of the school, a lot of people don't get service inside the school. So without Wi-Fi or service, it's very, a lot of functions of most phones don't work. A few also mentioned how some classes take advantage of apps and functions of software that's not available on desktop versions or laptop versions. And also, from personal experience, every single student I've met leading up to this meeting has expressed serious concern about the Wi-Fi being taken away and implored me to all, to come speak with all of you. I would also say that to create an environment conducive to learning, it would, whoops, giving students something to do during their downtime, like in lunch or in study hall, would work to that end. Though, don't get me wrong, students definitely do take advantage of phones in their classes. Though, I would say the number of people who do that are in a vast minority of the total student body, and it's not really anything a teacher just taking the phone away can't fix. And not to mention, it only seems like a matter of time before these same individuals try and do that same thing with the Chromebooks we're supposed to be getting next year. And though, and many respondents touched on something similar. So it seems that the majority of the student body doesn't want to lose the BYD network, and it seems like they have, it seems like we have some pretty good reasons why we want to keep it. Though, the student government remains open to further negotiations about the nature of BYD going forward. Though, I think it's in everyone's best interest that it remains an aspect of the experience at GHS.
Thank you, Cole.
Did anyone have any questions?
It's not normally our practice to respond to public commenters that come in, although it is, it does raise an interesting issue. Maybe Damian can respond.
Cole, I don't know if you heard from Mrs. McNamara or Mr. Haan, but we're not taking BYOD away.
Oh, I had an email you guys were thinking about it, but I wasn't sure if it had been decided.
Well, it was in discussion, yes. It was definitely a conversation, but the survey was very helpful. It certainly gave us some great results to think about. And I believe Mrs. McNamara and Mr. Haan should have conveyed that back to the student government already. So we've been in touch with them. We've had the conversation. BYOD is not going to be taken away.
Oh, well, awesome. Thank you.
Very effective persuasion.
Yeah, thank you, Cole.
Thanks for coming in.
Yes.
Can I just comment, Cole? Thank you so much for taking the initiative, though, and, you know, trying to get your fellow students' opinions. I mean, I think it's very helpful to everybody, you know, if you're participating in your governance, so to speak. So thank you so much for doing that and for coming out tonight, too.
Yeah. And actually, I'm not sure how much you guys have heard about it, but the student government is new again this year, and we were able to get a lot done, actually, namely being stuff like this survey. We also, we also got like bathroom locks put back on the door. So I'm not sure how much you guys have heard about it, but I think student government's going to be really important to the school going forward, in the high school at least.
From my standpoint, anytime you have stuff to share, come on over. We'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, we had a representative of the school board, though. I don't know what was going on with that. Yeah, but I heard he was here at some point.
Yeah, right, right. No, really. We'd love to hear from you guys.
Oh, awesome.
Thank you.
But Cole, thank you very much for coming in. We appreciate it, and we'd like to hear from you.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
We will see you again, hopefully.
Yep.
Sure you will.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is the showcase of students, which relates to the Farnsworth Middle School Schools to Watch redesignation. And for that, we will introduce Mr. Mike Laster. And his company.
Mr. Brian Sherman.
Yes, yes. I'd like to invite David Payton and Brian Sherman and the rest of the FMS team, if you guys want to come up. Thank the board for an opportunity to share the good news. We've invited members of our administrative team and members of the team that helped write the application. Turn the mic over to Brian. Brian will talk a little bit about, I'm sure, about the process that the middle school went through in order to achieve our second redesignation as a Schools to Watch.
Thank you, sir. Good evening. Thank you for the invite. What you have is a process that takes place in a school that volunteers to do it, and I don't think they initially know what the workload is when they actually take that on. Schools to Watch program obviously is a good thing. It's not a bad thing. Schools to Watch are nationally recognized and state-recognized middle schools. This is only a middle school, middle-level program, that takes a look at exempt they can present to you, or things that they just want to improve upon themselves. But it's a self-reflective process. And again, it takes a year and a half. So now, this is three and a half, well, I'm sorry, my math is off. This is now four and a half years of actual writing of an application that this district and this middle school have gone through. So we're talking 11 years back is when the process started. It's a culture that's in Farnsworth. It's where faculty and staff and the administration look and say, "We want to look at our best practices and continue those. We also want to look at where are gaps in what we do for our kids, and let's address those, and let's adjust those." And again, that's what this school has done as a culture that has continued now for almost 11 years. That's pretty impressive. What does the School to Watch look at? They look at four different domains. They look at the organization and structure. Is a middle school a place that's actually structured to meet the needs of the students? Common planning time? Do they have teams? That type of thing, that type of structure. What types of periods are there? Flexible periods of time? So that when you're going into your class, is it a 90-minute class? Is it an 80-minute class? Is it flexible that it can be 42 minutes here and 55 minutes there? How does it adjust to meet the needs of the students? The secondary you look at, or the second part of the domain, is social equity. Social equity, does everybody have an opportunity to participate in all the different things that happen in that school? It doesn't mean is everything fair. It means does every student have an opportunity? So if a student is incapable, has difficulty, can't do something, is the support there so that they can participate? That's the difference between fair and equitable. The other area we look at for domain is looking at developmental responsiveness. Special needs students, students that are having some difficulty, students that are quiet and don't get to do things because they're afraid to try, they don't want to take a risk. Are those issues being addressed by the faculty, by the staff, and by the administration? And the last area is academic excellence. And we look at that and say, okay, how good is the academic performance of the students here? Unlike the Blue Ribbons School that looks at just academic excellence, we look at all four domains. And again, because it is an exemplary school where we send... And again, because it is an exemplary school where we send people to look at and look at best practices going on in the school, we want to make sure that that continues. So that's why the redesignation process every three years. So it's much more rigorous. You've got a program here that's been going on for almost eleven years. So I'd just like to congratulate the team here, congratulate the school district, because they wouldn't get there without your support. And just read a, a comment from the, the plaque here that was presented uh, to the school about three weeks ago. And this is from the Commissioner of Education. "The New York State Education Department recognizes the Farnsworth Middle School for being designated a 2018 Essential Elements Schools to Watch. A model of academic excellence, developmental responsiveness, social equity, organization and structure," and it's signed by the Commissioner. And again, this is a School to Watch, national recognition and state recognition. And with a potential for fifteen-hundred middle-level programs in New York, only thirty-three schools are currently designated. That puts Farnsworth in the top two percent in this state. Congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Sherman, thank you, Brian, appreciate it. I'd like to thank the Board of Education just quickly. Mr. Roby, Mr. Pippa joining us tonight, part of our team, Mr. Wolf, one of our special education teachers, uh, our uh, science administrator, Ms. Bisnet Janks, Mr. Dumar joining us, and also behind us, one of our building cabinet members, Rachel Riley, who was also instrumental in writing our application. So I'd like to thank everybody, but more importantly, I'd thank all of our faculty, staff, and our students who make up the reason why we're such a great school community. So thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Laster, as well. Okay, the next item on our agenda is approval of the consent items with, which consist of the minutes of the May twenty-second meeting, the CPSE and CSE recommendations, our personnel action items, and the financials. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, Barbara, Second Judy? Are there any questions or comments? Um, I just had one change to the minutes where it says oath of office, it says three members took the oath of office, but really, it was just one. Um, any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Passes nine-zero. And now we move to information items. We will begin with Damian, curriculum and instruction.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, I'm pleased to report that the Farnsworth Middle School Student Help Desk, which is in its first year this year, was featured in the New York State Education Department Tech Innovators May 2018 Student Technology Support Edition. And I'm attaching the article for your information, and the link for the entire newsletter is also included. Um, I'll also share that I was with Mr. Laster last night to meet the second cohort of the middle school help desk, a very eager, excited group of kids, so it was great to see them and meet them. Uh, next item, I do have a textbook for your information. And the textbook is titled "The Memory of Things" by Gay Palizner, uh, for use in grade-nine English. Next, I am pleased to report, slow here, uh, we want to extend congratulations to twelfth grader Stanley Billamire. Uh, Stanley is the first prize winner in the high school category of the Holocaust Essay Contest, sponsored by this connected Aibnay Rith organization. Stanley and his teacher Brenna Autry will be recognized at the ceremony, excuse me, on June sixth. Stanley will also win a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar prize for his essay, and this is the eleventh consecutive year that Brenna Mrs. Autry has had someone placed in the top three. Um, certainly a tremendous accomplishment, so congratulations to both Stanley and Mrs. Autry. And I have three annual plans, uh, for your information. We'll be seeking approval at the next meeting. They are first, the Project SAVE Plan. Next is the Professional Development Plan for 2018-19, and AIS Plan for 2018-320, and these are for your information tonight. And lastly, the big news. Uh, finally, I'm very thrilled and have been awaiting this announcement. I'm thrilled to report that on June fourth, the Gilderlin Central School District finally received approval for additional SmartSchools funding. And this is funding that is part of the two-billion-dollar bond approved by state voters in two thousand fourteen, fourteen, excuse me. The money can be used for new computers and technology, infrastructure, security upgrades, and connectivity. And thus far, the district through SSBA funds has made significant improvements to its security cameras, we're in the process right now of making some wireless access upgrades at GHS. And the most recently approved project provides five-hundred-thirty-one-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars to the district for three critical improvements for student access and integration of technology. They are, number one, the Engage Learning Initiative, which is also known as the one-to-one model for all of our students of grades five through twelve. Students of grades six through twelve will receive Chromebooks for use in all classrooms, as well as at home. This initiative will ensure equitable access to technology for all students, again, both at home and in school, and very importantly, for all of our classrooms, where currently we have gaps in the access to technology. Secondly, at Farnsworth Middle School, we'll be upgrading the digital broadcast and media program, uh, also known as the TV studio, which is literally operating with Band-Aids at this point. So the middle school broadcast studio will be upgraded to current industry standards. And then lastly, there are some connectivity upgrades, servers and switches, et cetera, which will support both items one and two. The district's technology department has scheduled multiple dates during the summer for professional development, as well as universities, we're calling them, for both parents and students. Announcements will be forthcoming very soon. Additionally, uh, forums, procedures, policies, et cetera, have been prepared and will be posted for easy access on a dedicated webpage for the school district. So we're eager to get rolling, it will be an extremely busy summer, uh, but we're finally here, so.
Thank you, Damian, that's great news. Any questions or comments for Damian?
How much more are we entitled to get to?
Uh, we have, with all of the projects that have either been approved or are still in the queue for approval, I believe we're at about one-point-six-four million expanded, so we have about five-hundred thousand or so remaining, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now we move to school business information, Neil.
Thank you. I also have some good news to present in regards to our bus inspections. All buses in New York State are regularly inspected by the New York State Department of Transportation. New York State DOT recently issued the annual results of the school bus inspections they performed on the district's fleet for the period April first, two thousand seventeen, to March thirty-first, two thousand eighteen, which coincides with the state's fiscal year. The report identifies the number and percentages of vehicles that passed or were placed out of service due to one or more defects. The Gilderlin Central School District pass rate for this time period is ninety-nine-point-six percent, which is well above the statewide average pass rate of ninety-five-point-two percent. Credit for this achievement and appreciation for their constant diligence in maintaining our school bus fleet to the highest standards goes to Fleet Supervisor Mitch Karkner Senior and Mechanics Cal Dunston, Joe Falzo, Justin La Bombard, Ryan Nix, Joe Spalding, Dan Weber, and Fatland.
Thank you, Neil. Any questions or comments for Neil?
That's a great, ninety-nine-point-six.
Yes.
And I, I think too, Danielle, just as a supervisor of all.
Absolutely, as well, yes.
And now we move to superintendent information, Marie.
Thanks, Christine. Uh, the first item is a reminder that the fall, uh, two thousand eighteen NISBA convention is soon to be opening up registrations. This is the ninety-ninth Annual Convention and Education Expo, and it will be held in New York City on October twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. Um, registration opens on July fifteenth, and I think if you register early, we get a discount. So register early and often, and if board members are interested in attending, um, please let Linda Livingston know as soon as possible, so we can begin to make those arrangements. And my second task today, I think Christine is going to help me, is a bittersweet one. Uh, tonight, we are going to recognize Kathy Barber for her many years of service here on the Gilderlin Board. This is her last board meeting, on her second stint as a board member. Tonight, we're recognizing your last six years, but I need to remind everyone that Kathy served for six years prior to this, six years, from two thousand and five to two thousand and eleven, for a total of twelve years of volunteer, leadership, guidance, wisdom, reason, community service, um, just a tremendous contribution to our school community, Kathy. And you will be missed very much around this table. But on behalf of the whole board, we want to thank you for everything you've done, and maybe we'll see you again. So we have a, we have another plaque for you. So let me present this to you. It says, um, "For your service to the Board of Education from two thousand twelve to two thousand eighteen." Thank you so much, Kathy.
Kathy, thank you so much for everything that you've contributed. I feel like I've learned so much from you and listening to you and having you here, and we really appreciate and value everything you've done, and you definitely will be missed, and hopefully, you will continue to stay involved, because I think you bring a really valuable perspective and one that we, we need, so please keep that in mind, and if anybody else wants to add anything.
Well, thank you so much.
Almost you on our committees.
Yes, I've been on some very active committees, we have quite a few meetings.
You have been.
I still have one more.
Tomorrow, right?
Exactly, tomorrow morning, so, yes, I'll be, I'll be here again tomorrow, so. I'm not, I'm not going anywhere just now. But I think, I think you'll probably see me again at a meeting every so often, because it's, it's probably hard to just, just stop. After, after twelve years, uh, well, actually, first elected thirteen years ago, so um, it's been, it's been a real privilege to, to serve with, with uh, all of you and, and the board for all those years, and um, I will, I will miss it, I will miss it. It's true. But thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. And now we move to board president information. There are a few items this evening. The first relates to an arm's length of policies. Um, Barbara, did you want to speak to any of these policies?
Um, what we're trying to do is keep policies on, on a cycle, so that, you know, we don't probably have policies that are ten or twelve years old. So most of the policies that you see there are just review and renewal. Um, I'd point out the five-two-two-five student personal expression, that is a new one, and you may want to take a closer look at that, um, and, you know, give us some feedback on that. But other than that, uh, the health services, again, the state legislature, every year, does something different with that and makes more laws, so we just have to keep updated. And Kathy Oliver has been fantastic, you know, keeping us up to date with that, so we'll miss her.
Thank you, Barbara. Um, the next item relates to a forum on safety that was held on May twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen, that several of our board members attended at um, Colony Central High School. I think Seema and Teresa, if you would like to speak to this a little bit, or kind of give us some feedback on how that was.
Well, I'll just, I'll start by just saying thank you, Seema, because I wouldn't have known about it had it not been posted, um, and you mentioning it, so.
Can you talk into the microphone?
Put the mic.
Yeah, I can't.
Sorry. Can you hear me now? Um, it was a, a great forum, it really was. It was almost, it was great and sad at the same time, because just hearing some of the students speak about their concerns. Um, one of the students actually stood up and said that she had read on, online, some Midwestern school had, um, started stowing away stones.
Rocks, yeah.
Rocks, as a defense mechanism in the classroom, so that if somebody ever came in, they would stone them? I, I started tearing, listening to that, because the thought that students are trying to be proactive to help themselves in those kind of scenarios really just blew my mind, because I'm not that old, damn it. I don't remember going to school ever thinking any of this ever possibly happening, and it just blows my mind. It really, truly does, that these students really do go to school now with that thought of, "What would I do if something like this happened?", because it shouldn't be a thought in these kids' heads at all. Um, but they did bring up great points. One of the things I thought was really interesting, Seema, was that somebody brought up the idea that we are in a society in which students are always checked when they come into school, September, October time, for their physical health. They look at their backs, they look at their ears, they look at their sight, but mental health is never brought up at all. And I don't know how we do that. I think we're on the great path that we just started with the, um, what are we calling it?
The clinic?
Yes, the clinic. Um, but at the same time, one of the students had said, "Well, you know, if you go to your counselor, for whatever reason, people might be thinking that you're going to them for changing of classes or something, that you don't like this one class and you want to change class, but you could be talking to them about personal issues and nobody needs to be the wiser." Well, the same kind of applies with going to your nurse for issues that you would go every year. Everybody goes, and nobody needs to know what you're discussing with that. Maybe it's a social worker, maybe it's a psychologist in that same room. Um, it, it just made things, you're looking outside the box as to how you would address issues, because everybody has issues, it's just in how they cope with these issues, and finding the avenues that they need to be going at versus anger. So it was, it was very eye-opening, and I thought the panel did a great job in explaining how certain school districts do things and things that we can implement. But Seema, you can go on if you'd like.
Yeah, I, I was really impressed that, uh, this is at Colony Central High School, and it was, um, administrators, and they had police chiefs, and I thought it was great that they brought the, the high school student body into this, into the discussion, which I was impressed, because students were talking about it anyway, so, um, it just went really well. I think I emailed, I don't know if I emailed just Maria or the whole board, some of the notes that had taken um, about training for staff and teachers. Um, I know we've gotten emails as a board about the, the training for avoid, deny, defend, and I know it's not necessarily for schools, but people were talking about different types of training available that, um, that is available for schools. Just what other safety measures that schools are, are looking at. Um, Teresa mentioned the, the mental health screening at the beginning of the year. Uh, maybe that's something that we could be looking into. Uh, they mentioned sources of strength, which I was happy to hear that we're already doing that, so. Um, I know that we get emails on a regular basis about safety. I know Ben brought it up, um, at a board meeting, and then because it's always mentioned, um, on the surveys that we put out in the community, I know we've kind of started having a discussion about if we had a community discussion surrounding school safety, you know, what would the parameters be? What would the goal of that be? So I just wanted to follow up. They had, uh, one of the assistant superintendents, um, at SCODAC, who was a, a school shooting victim when he worked at East Green Bush, he was there and also spoke. Um, so it was just a good, uh, I guess, panel of, of people who had different, um, views to share, and I, I did appreciate them having the students, like Teresa mentioned. Students had different comments and interesting perspectives. You know, as students in the school, they know what the safety procedures are and what happens, and obviously, how that can be used, um, against them, so it was, it was, it was really insightful.
Yeah, that was, I forgot, that was one of the things that one of the students mentioned, was that typically, it is a student who's angry. Well, the, the student has gone through all the protocol that all the other kids are doing, so they already know what to do to avoid that, so it was just a, like I said, it was very informative, but at the same time, just a sad commentary as to where these kids are in their heads going to school every day. That these thoughts are actually in their head of, "What do you do?", that whole shelter-in-place, and, I don't know.
So we had a, um, our district-wide safety committee, not long after our last board meeting, when this topic came up, and we did have a beginning discussion about whether or not we would want to host some kind of a safety forum, and where we left the discussion was really with what Seema just mentioned about, talking about, "Well, what would we want to focus on, what would the goal and purpose be?", because you could go a lot of different ways with a forum, so, um, you know, we are very open to doing something like that. We just would need, you know, maybe a committee or a subcommittee standing would want, want to talk about, you know, what would we like to do during that? Is it for students, is it for the community? I think that forum was actually sponsored by the Sheriff's Office or the Police Department. So we would, you know, need to look at some of those things based on what it is we want to accomplish by it, but we're very open to do that. And we did also talk about the alternative, um, uh, protocols for, in place of lockdowns. We had that conversation, too. Again, talked about what's appropriate for schools compared to, you know, in the mall or other venues where running makes more sense. So anyway, I just want to let you know that we did bring all these topics up at our last safety committee, and happy to get some direction about what kind of a forum we might want to have.
Are you hoping for direction this evening, or something to think about?
Something to think about, because we'd have to do it in the fall at this point, anyway. But just food for thought, and maybe we can revisit it. Anyway, but just food for thought and maybe we can revisit it early in the summer.
Sure, yep. If everybody wants to think about it, maybe it's something we can put on our agenda for July. Okay, thank you. The next item is a brief discussion about high school start times. This is something that several of us have prioritized and it's been brought up on several occasions. And I think Barbara, recently, you had revisited the issue a little bit, if you want to discuss that.
Sure. After our last board meeting, I recall that we had been sort of the lead school board in presenting NISBA with a resolution, asking them to lobby the state legislature to sort of incentivize school districts to, you know, look at a later start time for their teams. Because the evidence is just so overwhelming that it is such a positive thing for the students. And, you know, after we had the discussion from, I think it was South Glens Falls, the thing that struck me most about that is that the students who were so adamant against the change, within a couple of months, were advocating that they would never go back, you know, to an earlier start time because the positives had just become so obvious so quickly for them. And that, you know, that the community had adapted and all that. And so I asked Maria, I said, "Well, how far along in the process are, you know, are we as a school board now? We all agree that this was an important issue to go for." And she said, "Well, the board hasn't really given us any direction." And so she said, "If you want us to pursue this, you know, have a board resolution or at least a board discussion or whatever." And I had shared with Maria that the Niskiuna School Board had had a presentation maybe three weeks ago, whenever I had talked to you, and that there is a study group where there was actually competition from the part of parents and people that wanted to be on the committee, they had to go to a lottery. And they're, you know, actively investigating. And as we all discussed last year, ideally, it's like a joint suburban council decision, but somebody has to take the lead. And so, you know, I said, "We'd bring it up here at Maria's direction and see if we're still interested and, you know, whatever steps we need to take to set up some kind of a committee to show that we're serious about this." I mean, as you review the literature, there's nothing that says we're on the wrong path. And Maria pointed me to a website for the Brighton School District, which was really, really thorough and fantastic. And I think I shared that with all of you, if I'm not mistaken, or at least the link to it. If not, then I'll pull it up again. But it's the Brighton Central School District out near...
Rochester.
Rochester, right. And, you know, they did a tremendous study. They had focus groups and all that. I still haven't had the time to actually call. Did they ever implement, do you know?
Yeah, I'm not sure where they are yet.
One of us should call and say, "Well, hey, you know, you had all this research and they did a bang-up job because they took all the arguments for and against it." And, you know, it's all published on their website. So take a look at that. So I don't know how, Maria, you want us to proceed or what more direction you need or whatever. We're open.
I guess it's just really around the table. I mean, we just need to know everyone wants us to invest the, you know, the people power and the time to look at all of this and, you know, we can get that rolling.
Okay, so if we want to engage or determine interest, Tim, is it something you would be interested in?
Yes.
Ben?
Yeah.
Teresa?
Yes.
I would say yes as well. Gloria?
Yeah, I'm really, you know, I've read a lot of the literature. Barbie's been really good about sending them over. And I think it would be very helpful to have a kind of a multi-grouped, you know, like staff.
Yes.
Because that's important for the perspectives and very clear goals for the group. I think it's important we look at not only districts that have done the research, but if they've implemented, how long have they implemented and what have been the results down the line? Because this kind of mixed, does it, you know, just affect the first couple of years and then it kind of drops off? I would be interested in really looking at also schools that have done it over a series of time, implemented it and then followed through on, did the pluses continue after the first, second year? Because there are a lot of pluses. I'd just like to make sure that we set very clear goals for the group. I believe you're very interested in it.
Okay.
Maria, the only study that I've run across is the Minnesota study that has followed kids like over a 10-year period and it's all been positive.
Yeah, but there's got to be other, like even Queensberry, I mean, they must be doing follow-up from theirs, what their experience has been.
Judy?
Yeah, I think it's good. At this stage and then figuring out, you know, there's so many complexities with a district like ours. I can't imagine it's easily figured out, but it'd be interesting to at least get started looking at it.
Okay. Kathy?
Well, I know we've been talking about this for a long time because I was on a committee a long time ago. It's called the Time of Day Committee, which didn't make any recommendations then. But so, and I recall reading a lot of studies then, and I'm sure there's more studies now. So, I mean, I'm sure it's still a good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Are we looking at like a feasibility study? Like what do we, what's this?
Well, I think it's, I think we need to gather the research, but I don't know that that's the biggest thing because it's out there. We've, you know, we did our little mini survey question back in January and, you know, Aubrey has been gathering some of the research that came through the communications service because other districts are dabbling with this, I think, kind of as we have. I think what it comes down to is the nuts and bolts of how does it work? And so the Brighton study, just to reference back to what Barbara mentioned, they had a committee not so much to do the research, but to create the options for how it would happen. And then did widespread surveying and focus group to talk about which option would make the most sense. I haven't looked at their website in a little while, but they interviewed and heard from, I mean, there were thousands of pages of comments. So I think we would need to talk about who might be on such a committee, who would chair such a committee, what the charge to the committee would be and some timeline kinds of things. If there are budgetary implications, is it realistic that we would be at a place by January to make some kind of a suggestion? So those are some of the things I think that are worthwhile to talk about.
Now, do you need board members to be with you when you're creating this committee or how do you...
Absolutely, absolutely. So what I will do to get the ball rolling is maybe flesh out what it might look like and then get some feedback at the starting point. We have some models for task forces that have worked well in the past. But I do think it has to be across stakeholder groups. If you remember the survey results, there were differences among the various groups of individual, you know, the different categories of individuals. So I think we're going to need to include, you know, faculty, staff, students, transportation, maintenance. Board members need to have a role and obviously the district office team or administrative team. So I'll have to give some thought to what that structure might look like and some timelines. But I'm willing to kind of begin drafting something that the board can respond to.
It sounds like you're not approaching this, that the group isn't deciding whether this is a good idea or not, they're deciding how to implement it.
Well, I think there's probably...
Are we just making the assumption that we're going?
Well, I think there's an education piece that has to happen first. I honestly don't see this happening by January. I don't know that anyone in July and August is going to want to come to meetings and do that. So part of it's going to be an education piece and that may need to be the forum by which we recruit people to want to talk about if this is the what we want to do, what's the how. And I know when school districts have wrestled with this, when they get to the how, the what seems less desirable. So how matters, I guess, is the bottom line there.
I think the other critical piece is to stay in touch with our fellow school districts and see, you know, what progress they're making as well. Because rather than reinventing the wheel, I don't know what the task force over Bethlehem looks like or at Niski, but can't hurt to ask them.
I will follow up with both of those superintendents. It's my understanding that neither of those districts, neither of those districts' task forces are district-sponsored. I think they're community-sponsored. I'm not sure about that, but...
I think the Niski one was district-sponsored, but you can check on that.
Yeah, I'll double-check. So anyway, I'll get the ball rolling and then we can get feedback.
Thank you.
Yep, sounds good. Thank you. And now we move to action items, school business management. Neil?
Okay, this is another arm's length or more. So, sit back and enjoy. First item this evening is a bond resolution authorizing the purchase of various school buses, vehicles, and equipment. So back on May 15th, the voters of the district approved the purchase of eight 66-passenger school buses, one 60-passenger wheelchair bus, one minivan, and one large track mower in the total amount of $1,117,700. What we're asking the board to do tonight is authorizing the borrowing for that, and we will borrow for five years. We will need a roll call vote and we do need two-thirds of the members of the board to vote yes on the proposition in order for it to pass.
Okay. Before we do the roll call, may I have a motion to approve? Barbara, second. Judy? Questions or comments? Okay, Linda?
Mrs. Barbara?
Yes.
Mrs. Frederica?
Yes.
Mrs. Jito?
Yes.
Mr. Coles?
Yes.
Ms. Hayes?
Yes.
Mr. Correa?
Yes.
Mrs. Rivera?
Yes.
Mrs. Slack?
Yes.
Mrs. Hallham?
Yes.
Next is a resolution to approve the engagement letter confirming the understanding of auditing services to be provided by Weston Company CPAs for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2018.
May I have a motion to approve the external auditor agreement? Gloria, second. Ben? Any questions or comments?
This expires in 2018, the Senator said.
Each year, we appoint the auditors for a five-year term, but each year, there's a letter of understanding. It's called an engagement letter, which again outlines the work that the CPAs are going to do. And it also outlines the responsibility of the school district in cooperating with them when they're here. So that engagement letter is done annually outside of even the five years.
Does it seem like it was a close deadline for...
Oh, well, the...
Yeah.
Yes, the fiscal year ends June 30th, 18. They won't be done with the work that'll take place throughout the summer and we'll have the results of the audit in September.
Thank you.
And this went through the audit committee?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next, we have an internal auditing agreement. Again, this one went through the audit committee. This is with Questar III to conduct internal audit services in accordance with the New York State Comptroller's requirement. And the comptroller's requirement is that each school district can engage in an internal audit process. And each year, a risk assessment will be done as well as one or more areas of special audit. So the agreement is a small increase of 2% over the previous year. This is an intermunicipal agreement, which is one of the options that we're allowed to choose by working with Questar III BOCs.
May I have a motion to approve the internal auditing agreement? Judy, second. Kathy? Questions or comments on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is an agreement with Macy's Realty Holdings for tax surcharge or tax challenge that was filed. Both the town and the school district jointly went in together on this one. What the parties have come to is an agreement in contemplation of settlement rather than going to trial. So that's recommended for your approval. Basically, what the agreement is, is to reduce the original assessed value from $11,500,000 in 2016-17 to $9,640,000. And then in 2017, from the same $11,500,000 to $7,784,740. Those, that settlement would result in a refund of $57,051 for 2016-17 and $88,460 for 2017-18.
May I have a motion to approve the settlement resolution? Teresa, second. Kathy? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes.
Next, we have two service agreements for students with disabilities that encompass this summer as well as the 2018-19 school year. The providers are Music Speaks and Wildwood. Music Speaks provides therapeutic students, services to students with disabilities using music-based approach. And Wildwood is for, specializes in serving students with autism, neurological impairments, and complex learning disabilities.
May I have a motion to approve the service agreement? Seema, second. Ben? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next, we have an internship agreement with Casanova College and we're recommending approval of that agreement.
May I have a motion to approve the internship agreement? Barbara, second. Judy? Questions about this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is an agreement with the University of Albany to make available college-level courses to high school students for the 2018-19 school year. Again, that's a great opportunity for our students to have that ability. So we would support that. And in total, it's expected that our students will receive college-level credit for approximately 400 courses, which are based on the number of students enrolled in each section through this arrangement.
May I have a motion to approve the agreement with the University of Albany? Seema, second. Teresa? Questions or comments? Other than, this sounds like a very exciting opportunity. I'm glad to hear that we're doing it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is a memorandum of agreement for, with Albany County to serve as a point of dispensing site in case of some sort of disaster, emergency, or mass vaccination. They would like to use our high school in order, Albany County would, in order to serve the community.
May I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement? Gloria, second. Kathy? Questions or comments about this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is a recommendation, which was reviewed by the Business Practices Committee, to appoint Management Advisory Group to act on the district's behalf in submitting claims to Medicaid for reimbursement. They've been doing this in years past. They did increase their fee for next year from $7,000 to $12,000. But work that John Rizzo did in seeking out other proposals, we believe that Management Advisory Group should continue in this capacity.
May I have a motion to approve the appointment of the Management Advisory Group? Barbara, second. Kathy? Questions or comments?
Just that, this went to Audit Committee and we did say that we're going to revisit it next year and do another RFP.
Yes, so this is a one-year agreement. Thank you. Teresa?
Thank you. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next is banking services. So we solicited proposals for banking services. We do this every five years and we're concluding the initial five-year agreement. We looked at three area banks, KeyBank, M&amp;T Bank, and Pioneer Bank. And the analysis that was performed, the recommendation is that we continue to maintain our relationship with KeyBank compared to the other two. All banks, large commercial banks in our area, could serve us well. The biggest difference between the three proposals is there was a smaller required minimum balance by KeyBank compared to the other two banks, which would allow us to put more money into investments and have greater earnings. So that was the key difference.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the appointment of KeyBank? Judy, second. Gloria? Are there any questions or comments about this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next, we have the award of bids for private transportation contracts for the summer. Next, we have the award of bids for private transportation contracts for the summer. This is for students with disabilities attending schools, either within Gilderland or outside of Gilderland, private schools. The recommendations, there's several different recommendations based on the combinations that we have here, so those are all highlighted in yellow. So, we're recommending award as indicated on the memo that you received.
May I have a motion to approve the award of bids? Tim, second. Judy, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next, we have the award of bids related to our school lunch program. There are eight or nine of them that we've provided information on. I'll just read which ones have been attached. We have bakery items, we have cafeteria groceries, we have cafeteria materials and supplies, cafeteria snacks, fresh bread products, fresh pizza, further processed commodities, and ice cream. So, each of those results is indicating the memo to you as well as the recommendation for award.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the award of school lunch bids? Kathy, second. Gloria, any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes nine zero.
Next item is a recommendation to approve budgetary transfers totaling $339,681. One of them is moving some money from computer-assisted instruction to central data processing. The others at the request of the Business Practices Committee, and that is to take money, remaining funds from special education and move them to transportation. That transfer would be for the purpose of purchasing a replacement bus radio, bus radio system. So, we have radios in all of our buses and our dispatch area as well. It's a very old system. It's on what's called low band, UHF, so we have an antenna on the transportation building that attempts to communicate with all our buses throughout the district, which most of the time it does. Sometimes it has some issues reaching all of our buses depending on the terrain and the weather and other factors. So, we have, sometimes we have spotty reception, dead spots throughout our district, and we do cover quite a large area down by the SUNY campus out to Altmont. Danielle, Corrie, again, and I met with the Albany County Sheriff's Office about a month ago. I invited us to come out. They have a new countywide emergency radio system that they've invested in, and they put towers up throughout Albany County, and they have a system that is now servicing not only Albany County, but all the local police departments in Albany County, all fire, all EMS, and they're anxious to get school districts on the system as well. So, they talked to us about the system. We have much better coverage. They don't have any dead spots in their configuration. Also, if one tower goes down, there's cross coverage, so other towers will pick up, so it's got some redundancy built in. We just have a single antenna, and that's our system right now. So, it's a direction that we should move as a district. It is a safety issue for our buses. So, we took a look at that. It is an expensive system. We're looking about $325,000, close to that, based on New York State contract prices. That would be equipping all of our buses, our entire fleet, 113 buses. And again, we would need some additional radios for our dispatchers in the bus garage itself, plus we're looking at some handheld radios at the school level to allow principals to communicate with buses for that purpose. What this would also do, we would have our own channel on the Albany County system, as it was described to us. So, we'll just have our own channel to communicate amongst ourselves. If there's a need to involve other emergency responders in an incident, we could be directed to switch channels. So, we might be put in touch, a driver may be able to switch a channel. It'd be talking to EMS or talking to police, depending on the nature of the situation and what the 911 dispatcher feels is appropriate at that point. So, this is an opportunity with some savings that we have in the area of special education from BOCs placements, to be able to have that money. We do have a lot of movement in special ed. From once we set the budget, we actually had a 20%, 25% turnover on the list of kids that we had when we developed the budget versus what we have actually during the school year. We also have a difference in the amount of services that are being received, not only program services, but what we call related services or one-to-one aid. So, looking at the current students compared to what we had budgeted, we do have that savings available to us. We're closing out the year, so we're pretty confident in terms of where those BOCs, special education costs are going to come out, and that would give us the ability to go ahead and make this purchase of a new bus radio system.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve the general fund transfers? Barbara, second. Kathy, are there any questions and comments for Neil about this one?
I just, just a comment that you're correct. I think pretty much every town is moving to the 800-megahertz system, and you probably should talk to the town about it because, you know, if you want to communicate with their dispatch as well, just, I would just say, just go out and talk to them because they are switching over too. So, and my understanding is, it's not necessarily 100% perfect coverage system that, you know, but I don't know what's going on in other towns because, you know, the school district isn't just Gilderland. So, if you're in a different town, your bus is like in Bethlehem, maybe you have to communicate with their dispatch? I mean, I'm not really sure how that all works.
Well, if they were, yeah, what was described to us is, we're going to be on the Albany County system, so if we need to communicate with any of the emergency services, we would start with the normal process where we would reach out to 911 or whatever, or communicate that request. We would be directed to switch channels if need be, but we would be, that would still be handled by our dispatch. So, a call would come into our dispatch, who would alert law enforcement like they normally would if that was the appropriate party. And then from there, the county emergency system that's being manned would take control of the situation and direct the school district who they should switch channels, be in touch with whomever, or continue the normal course of action, depending on the nature of the situation.
So, it's not that, it's just your bus driver would call 911. It would be, it would just be like an emergency call. It wouldn't be just like communicating directly with...
No, we would need to be authorized to switch. We would have our own channel for our own internal communications, but we would need that authorization for somebody on the emergency management side to tell us, "We want you to switch to a different channel and talk directly with someone." Otherwise, the calls coming into our dispatch center, who would initiate the 911 call, and we would get further guidance from there.
Okay.
Can I just ask, is this a transfer that's going to be for this year's budget or for the next one coming up?
For this year's budget.
This year's, okay.
Money identified in this year's, savings in this year's budget.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes.
Okay, and then one more item. We have several donations this evening. We have a monetary donation from AXA Foundation to be used for professional development at the high school, a violin from Mrs. Lydia Yankovowsky, a violin from Ms. Noreen Benton, and two sit-to-stand desk risers from CS Arch.
May I have a motion to accept the donation? Teresa, second. Tim, questions or comments? Other than thank you for the very generous donations, we really appreciate it. I think we've been very lucky this year in all of the donations that we've received. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you, Neil. Now, we move to Board President Information, of which there are two items this evening. The first relates to the approval of the superintendent's contract and extension. As we've discussed, may I have a motion to approve the contract? Judy, second. Barbara, questions or comments?
I would just like to make a comment on why I'll be voting no on it. And mostly, it just revolves around the idea of the length of the term of the contract and how it's a five-year that has gone to four and now go back to five. I just don't agree with that idea of a contract length. I think it sends a bad message to all of the bargaining units and all of the Gilderland employees who are under certain length deals, whether it's a three or a two. And if you are on a three and you go to two, it doesn't go back to three. It runs out. Sometimes it goes to zero and into negative territory because you're without a contract for a while. So, that would be my biggest concern on this type of an agreement, that it should work like my familiarity with all contracts would be. So, I just wanted to put that out there.
Yep, thank you. So, just kind of a broad stroke about the length. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed?
No.
Okay.
Same, like two states.
Okay, so passes seven, one, and one abstention. Thank you. The next item relates to the settlement of an agreement with a dispute we had regarding a special ed student, and what happened was its ratification of an action that took place in between our last meeting because the agreement needed to be settled within 30 days, and we weren't meeting soon enough to do that as a board. So, that has been signed, and now we are going to ratify that settlement agreement. So, may I have a motion to approve the resolution? Tim, second. Teresa, are there any questions or comments about this? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes nine zero. And now, we move down to Board Committee reports. We will start with audit. Teresa?
We met on, what was it, Wednesday, May 31st? I don't know what day of the week it was, but Neil basically covered everything that we went over. Was there anything that we, that you didn't discuss, Neil? I think that was everything.
We reviewed the credit card policy. We have some minor revisions to that.
Yes.
Other than that, and we approved some claims auditor reports.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Next.
We don't have a meeting scheduled yet.
Okay. Next, we move to Business Practices. Kathy?
Okay, well, we already approved several things that we talked about, the radio system for the buses, that the transfer of funds to buy those radios. We also had talked about the Medicaid third-party billing services, which we also approved, and the banking services bid, which we also approved. So, also, we had a long discussion at Business Practices about the organic garden at the middle school, and I guess Cliff and the maintenance department has been taking care of the garden, and we, the thought was that that shouldn't be necessary, that we should have some other purpose for this garden. And it just hasn't attracted a lot of attention for teachers to bring their classes down, for whatever reason. They just haven't done a lot of, utilized the garden very much. So, there were several things discussed as possibilities, which is also just letting maybe students and their parents have individual garden plots to take care of, kind of like a community garden, but just with, within the school. There was also an idea of reaching out to more students other than just middle school students. The thought was that perhaps high school students would like community service credit for working in the garden. Of course, we'd have to have someone to supervise, so that's an issue as well, just finding somebody to come and supervise the students working in the garden. So, we didn't really come to any conclusion. We just talked about it a lot, and it's something that maybe should be thought about more in the future, just how to use the garden space that exists there. I'm sure everyone's familiar with the garden. It's right in front of the middle school. So, we talked about that. We also talked about increased need for classroom space, and I guess Victory Childcare has been renting space and has been renting two rooms at a couple of schools. I think Farnsworth and Pine Bush has voluntarily given up one of the rooms so that we could use it otherwise. There has been kind of a history of low enrollment in that childcare. There, just a few issues were brought up, just as people just anecdotally why they hadn't enrolled their children. And I know it's at Farnsworth, and there was a proposal to use some more, to bring some BOCs classes to the middle school, and we needed the rooms. There was a lot of discussion about just rooms at the middle school and how we, how those are utilized and what's the best use. And I guess Victory Childcare, I can't, I think they have another, is it another year on their contract?
Yes.
So, until their contract comes up for renewal, they have a contract for the rooms, but they've been good about voluntarily relinquishing the rooms. So, if they don't need them for, because they don't have enough kids for two rooms. So, there was a discussion about that, and I think that was pretty much, other than the other things that I just mentioned that we already talked about, I think that was pretty much it, unless, Neil, was there anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And then we move to Communications. Gloria?
We met on June 8th. One of the things, hopefully, you looked at in the Friday Bulletin was the response to emails. That had been raised as an issue a couple of meetings ago. We talked about it. Marie kindly went ahead and drafted something that which Communications looked at. So, hopefully, that me, I didn't receive any feedback, so I'm hoping that met everyone's needs. We tried to take into account some of the comments that we made the last time, particularly the idea Marie brought up about not sounding like it. We just hit a button and boom, put that sentence out there, but to really personalize it in some way, but to make sure that anyone who does contact one of us, subset of us, all of us, superintendent, that we all know about it and that person gets the response. That was our goal. Hopefully, we've got something in place that will do that. Second big item, of course, we've been working on all year, is the handbook for Better Schools' operating procedures. We revisited two of the topics I told you last time that we had not finished. There were two sections, really, three sections, but two sections in Section 3, we dealt with conducting self-evaluations and expressing opinions about other board members' performance. The committee made some minor edits to the conducting self-evaluation. We did look briefly at a NISBA model for board self-evaluations, and it's our recommendation to you that a subcommittee, either one of the standing committees or an ad hoc committee, be put together to focus on this topic during the next year, to put together a self-evaluation tool that we will use as a board to help us. The committee made significant edits to the expressing opinions topic. We renamed it. It's called Resolving Concerns About Fellow Board Members. The committee also recommended edits to Section 4, which was the planning section, and Section 5 Personnel. Now, we had markups from people and ideas from people that did respond to us. You'll be getting all of them shortly via the portal. On Friday, we'll have them. You'll be getting them on Friday, so you can look at what our final recommendations are. We did not do the activity calendar, although we, it's in there as a need, and I think DOT is going to start it, at least put on the calendar exactly what goes on now, and then we will be able to work on that to get that in a good format that we can use month by month. Rather than looking at the whole year, we'll do it month by month, and that will hopefully keep us on track and not lose sight of things that might sometimes get lost. I did write a first draft for the introduction because, based on a discussion at the last board meeting, the feeling was that, what's the goal, you know, what was the purpose of this handbook, you know, the feeling that is just a gotcha kind of thing, or, so we talked about that. I wrote a draft of an introduction. I don't think everybody has it, right? We'll put it out with Friday stuff. Okay, I made some suggestions, and the key things in there that we put in there that I took away from your last, from our last talk was that the word, it's used as a guide. It's not intended to be a policy document at all. It's to provide some procedural guidance and direction as we work towards meeting our responsibilities, that we gave credit to NISBA, of course, to their help in giving us the template for working on this, and that we put in there that we would continue to revise as we go through the years because it's never going to be perfect at any point, but as we learn from it and change procedures or whatever we do. I did recommend we do it as a loosey-finder, single-sided, so we can easily swap pages out if we decide to change something. And I think that's all. We are not meeting again this year. I would like to thank Judy and SEMA, Alan, who's no longer here, but, and Ben, who has now joined the committee for their help this year, and all of you who helped us out with this handbook, then giving us little feedbacks. You know, that really helped our work and helped it go quick. So, thank you so much for that.
Thank you, and thank you, Gloria, for all your... Thank you, and thank you, Gloria, for all your work on that. I know it's, it's been a lot. We appreciate it. And now, we move to policy committee. Barbara?
You have the fruits of our labors in your packets already, and we're meeting tomorrow morning to give you some more.
Thank you. And now, we move to public comment number two. Linda, has anybody signed up this evening? No? Okay. We move to board issues, ideas, and sharing. Does anybody have anything that they would like to add this evening? Tim?
I had a few things for board sharing. Tomorrow, there's going to be an event over at the Joe with 4,000 students from 25 different schools participating, and at least as far as I know, third grades from Pine Bush and Gilderland Elementary will be attending. There may be other, other elementary schools going, or middle or high school for all I know.
Sixth grade.
And, sixth grade also? Okay, great. And so, they go to the Joe. I went last year with Pine Bush, fifth grade went last year, and you end up seeing a Valley Cats baseball game, there's some health and wellness activities and discussion. They get a bag lunch with, of course, a hot dog in it, and then they get to watch a ballgame or at least a couple innings of a ballgame, so it's a, it's a fun activity. Mr. Torrey has done a lot of work from Pine Bush, getting the event going and getting the word out to his colleagues, so it's a, it's a nice, nice day, and everybody has a, has a lot of fun, but it's busy over there and very hectic. Second item also kind of ties in with the phys ed department. The Gilderland Elementary held the Deer Dash, which is an annual event. They held that on Friday, May 25th. Great day for students, parents, and staff. It was beautiful weather day, pretty hot, temp got up in the 80s that day. So, I wanted to thank Mr. Lockwood, the principal there. He let me hand out charms at the finish line to the students as they came in, which was great because I just had to stand there and didn't have to run. And, and it was quite a dash because when they finished, they dashed right over to the Freeze Pop table, which was very popular that day. Lot of setup and organization goes into the, the event, and I know a lot of the staff pitches in on that, but Coach Scanlon and Coach B from the phys ed department there did a great job, very good organization. And probably the, the big headline from the event, though, was that Mrs. Rivera ran the entire course that day, and she had a coat on. It was like 85 degrees, so she, she gets big props for that. And, but it was a really, really fun event. The kids, kids had a blast, and they loved those little charms. They couldn't wait to get those. And finally, I just wanted to say thank you to Lena Gupta and the High School Environmental Club. Lena's a sophomore at the high school, but she also is a former Pine Bush student. She happened to contact Mr. Sanita over at Pine Bush with a donation of two nectarine trees to Pine Bush, and they were nice enough to choose to plant them in the orchard that's out in front of the school. They were delivered last Friday, and the really nice part was that two of the maintenance employees came over to put the trees in, so, which I was planning on doing, but when I got there, they were already in the ground, so that was great. So, I want to thank Jeff Laporte and Andrew Borey, who was also a former Pine Bush student, so it kind of all came together. It's the 16th year of the orchard, and there's now about 20 apple trees, two peach trees, two nectarine trees.
A partridge.
Two pear trees. But no, no partridge that I know of. But I really wanted to thank Lena, and I wish I knew more of the members of the club, but I, I emailed her, and we just haven't connected yet on that, but I, I really appreciate the High School Environmental Club, and I know all of Pine Bush does for the donation. So, thank you.
Yep, and thank you, Tim, for all of your hard work on the orchard. I know you spend many days there.
It's a lot, lot of mowing, yes. It's fun, though.
Teresa?
Oh, I wanted to ask Neil, just, I'm sorry to be so impromptu about it because I didn't ask you before, but do you have any update regarding the schoolhouse?
Uh, no, we really don't have any.
It just dawned on me, and I, I've been meaning to.
No, we're, we're kind of at the same spot. We're waiting for a suitor to come forward and express some interest in, in the schoolhouse. We did send out letters to every historical association that we could find locally, countywide, statewide. Didn't yield any results, no interest from any of those parties, so we're still waiting to see if someone comes forward. If someone does, then that would initiate the quiet title process that we talked about in terms of ownership of the building, but for now, we're still kind of a wait-and-see mode.
However, it will be open this Saturday is the, on the Path Through History Tour, so.
You can walk, it, it is structurally sound now.
Yes, you can walk in and not fall through the floor. So, yes, there'll be, the door will be open, someone from the Historical Society will be there, there'll be a sign out front announcing that, and so if you have something, just a little time on Saturday, that would be a fun thing to do.
Great.
Seema?
Just to add on to what Tim said about the PE teachers, I can only speak to Mr. Scanlon as, as a parent at GES, but it sounds like all of the PE teachers really coordinate and make a huge effort for these elementary school kids. And as a parent, I can say like my older daughter who liked kindergarten the first week of school, except she cried because they made her run in DE, that was in kindergarten, and now she's in third, she does the morning rhyme club, she did the track meet today, she runs like all the time. I don't know what they're doing, but they're doing awesome. So, I just say congrats to them, and thank you.
Great. Ben?
So, I know that the board is very familiar with EMC at this point, but just to fulfill this social obligation, last Thursday, we had our end-of-year symposium for the 2017, 2018 year. We had 11 students give some really amazing speeches. Some of them, you know, made me sit back and go like this, and I've been reading their work all year, so it takes, it takes a special, special something from the students to, to really get to me like that. For those of you who weren't able to make it, you know, I know that the board at least had things going on every single night that week, and, and something that very night. The, the show, the symposium is up on the, on the YouTube for the school, GHS Media. It's in parts one and parts two. We're trying to cut that down into one video. You can also, the, the speeches that the students gave were not about their work that year, so if the speech inspires you, which no doubt they will, you can reach out to, you know, Mr. Bott, Mrs. Gergen, or myself, and we will provide you with more of the student work, which is just as impressive as, as those speeches. On Friday of this week, we'll be meeting with the crew for next year already. There's, there's 16 students, I believe, signed up for next year, and so we're, we're really excited about starting all over again, so thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Just want to mention, the Board of Regent member came to the symposium on Thursday. Was very impressed.
I think a special thank you to Ben for putting in the time that he's put in on that and what that's contributed to our students is great. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we need a motion to go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person and matters related to job performance and possible discipline, as well as continue the discussion related to the annual evaluation of the superintendent. May I have a motion? Tim, second. Ben, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes nine zero. Thank you.